All right, Sheriff, you got it over?
Yes, sir. Steve Watson going to open the test with word of prayer.
Father, please. Most gracious heaven and father, we thank you for this day. Thank you, Lord, for being blessed and supplied with this day. Well, I just thank you for each and every one in this room, and I just ask a special blessing to bone, Father. And I just ask you to watch over them. The sick, dear Lord, just give them their most wanted health, be thy will. And Father, discomfort those that have lost loved ones. Father, I just ask that you be with our firefighters and our law enforcement, Lord, as they go out daily and put their lives on the line, dear God. I just ask you to watch over and protect them. Lord, I ask that you grant us knowledge and wisdom as we go into this meeting, Lord, and understanding that we handle business in a godly manner and a pleasing manner to you. Ask you, Lord, that you go with us and forgive us for many sins. For us these things in Jesus' precious and holy name. Amen.
Amen. Great, Steve.
Miss Charley?
Yes.
You want to speak?
Uh, well, we're on this. I need to do that.
Okay.
Where would you like, where would you like?
Don't mind, you got the floor. You own this place.
Okay. But I put my hand on your shoulder. Sometimes I'm a little bit up and about. I'm here because of the rumor in the county that we have an only stall for dogs. And I live next door to a lady who has two pit bulls. I call them killer dogs. In the last two months, I've spent seventeen hundred dollars at the vet because they've come into my yard and attacked my poodles. Now, if you know anything about poodles, you know that they are not an aggressive breed. This breed is extremely aggressive. People used to walk up the road, they won't do it anymore. Even though there's streams that block the view of the road, the dogs somehow notice somebody out there and that will charge them. So they don't ride bikes or walk up the road anymore. I do have a finned in, a pinned in fence that I'll put my poodles in. It's an old pole barn that I've put fencing around it. But every one of the attacks have occurred in my yard. When they are undone from the chain that sometimes they are in, they make a beeline over there. I guess my female poodle is very attractive because that's what they want. And then I have a male poodle and he thinks she belongs to him. You know, so he'll protect her at all costs. But anyway, when my daughter lived with me a couple of years ago before her house was ready for her and her daughter to move into, they attacked two of her dogs in my yard. I've had my grandchildren to come up to my house to see grandma, and the dogs have charged them. Now, I have a baby gun and I'm not afraid of them myself. I can point my finger at and tell them to go and they will go. But it's just my dogs that won't leave alone. So I came today to ask you gentlemen, and ladies, there's two of us here, if y'all would consider doing something, if not all pooches, then the, um, the, what are they, pit bulls? Because they are a danger to our community. Now, she rents where she lives from a gentleman known as Catfish. I don't know him.
Where you live at?
I live over, County Road 197. Do what?
I know the dogs.
Yes, I called the sheriff's department the last two times.
Your dogs, not all the dogs that you got.
Well, yes, I know Claudia's down the road who has the good dog groomer. They went all the way down to her yard and got hold of her German shepherd. And she took her to court, but they didn't show up. They just didn't come. They told Ms. Claudia that she could garnish her wages, but she hasn't done that yet. I told her I would stand in line behind her, let her have first shot at it. Don't want to hurt those people. I'm a peace-loving woman, but enough is enough. Now, the sheriff's guys that have come to the house have been extremely helpful. They gone over to try to talk to them, they wouldn't answer their door. There's three of them. Excuse me. You got me later, wouldn't you?
No.
I've been out there myself, thank you.
Well, did, and they came to the door?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, they won't come to the door, they won't talk to me. They'll go right in their house. And the last sheriff's deputy that came wouldn't let me go over with him because he was concerned the dogs might retaliate against me. I'd love to have had a kick at it. I would have loved to have had a kick at it. We're not bothering anybody. We're minding our own business. We're doing everything we can to live the way we're supposed to live. We love the Lord too, and I appreciate it. And pray for our, our guys that do the fire and the sheriff's department. But it's time something was done. Every so, excuse me, I didn't mean that as a threat, but every so often, they'll turn them loose and they run free. And we on the street, I don't think we should have to pay for the fact that those are dogs that are just mean spirited.
Right.
You know, that, that's just my thoughts. Let me see if I have anything else that I wanted to tell you because I wrote it down. All the injuries that I've experienced and my daughter has experienced have been in my yard. They come in my yard. No, oh, occasionally there's a smell of marijuana that comes from my house, but that doesn't have anything to do with the dogs. It's just another act of lawlessness. Okay? Does anybody have a question they want to ask me?
Uh, we need to get you-
This is our lawyer.
Yeah. If you will sign an affidavit for us, and we got one over at the board office. And you'll just wait around till after we're done. Me and you and Mr. Clayton will go over there and let you sign one. At that point in time, we got to go through the process under our ordinance, but there is a process to handle dangerous dogs.
Okay.
And so-
I did not know.
We are gonna, we will go through that process for you and-
Thank you.
And the other neighbors out there.
Yes.
And we'll, we'll do what needs to be done under our ordinance.
Thank you. I will, I will do that.
Okay.
Thank you, guys, I appreciate it.
Oh, I'd say that, ma'am, I get, we get called every week.
On that too.
Almost every day on dogs. And oftentimes, people feel uncomfortable going and signing an affidavit. They will, they say, you're, you're, you're the law, you stand there with gun and bag, why don't you do something? And sometime, and, and I'm thankful that you don't feel uncomfortable doing this. A lot of times, neighbors feel uncomfortable charging their neighbors in fear of retaliation or, or what they might do.
I've got about six right here from another issue we got on another side of the county.
We need to do something to give, to give us a little more teeth in our, uh, being able to deal with these vicious dogs.
Like, like, man, my-
Well, they're dangerous.
They are dangerous.
And they're dangerous to children who get to the age where they can get outside and play and not have parents' eyes on them. They're just dangerous. People shouldn't have to live under that.
People should be able to walk around-
I agree.
And not be fearful of animals.
I agree.
We, we have an ordinance against aggressive animals like that if you sign that affidavit.
I wasn't told that, but what I was told that we get in touch with the dog catcher in DuOveney.
No, it's Kurt Clayton.
We have one in the county.
We have one in the county also.
Big grill, right?
Oh, okay. But I never got a call, you know, or anything out, unless I got in touch with you or not. But I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
You want, you want us to, who's, who's got that affidavit?
It's a, uh, well, Kurt knows where it is, it's like on his desk or something.
Will Pedro know where?
Well, he needs to be there. That's a counter to us.
Okay.
All right, we're going, y'all ready? Get ready, miss.
I am.
It makes me feel better that we can tip her. All right, let's start with our consent again, uh, do I need to read all these out? Or approve them as one or?
Read them all.
Okay. Uh, approve, uh, statement of expenditures for the tax office from May 2023. Approved statement of expenditures for the sheriff's department in jail for May 2023. Approved meal log for jail for May. Approved claim docket payments for May. Approved board minutes for May. Approved road department work schedule for June. Approved solid waste register for May, and approved medical examiner for these nineteen. Oh, I've taken them. You saying the-
Yeah, I got it even though I'm-
Oh, okay.
I will make a motion to approve that concern.
I want second.
Motion by CJ, second by Randy. All in favor? Motion, K. You can. I don't look that way, but.
Let's go to the board, apparently. Discuss resolution for employing attorney for legal services for defense of court matter. Most of them. Motion by Randy.
So I, I can back up on that.
Did I say?
We need to approve their pay too on that. And Chandler, didn't you say Anna Kate's going to go with Mason?
No, 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 no.
This is something that probably got that off track.
Yeah, so if you are not aware, the Daily Journal has sued the county.
The Daily Journal had told me he said that, but I'm aware, so that's what-
The Daily Journal sued the county and basically they believe that they should be able to obtain search warrants, uh, from active investigations. So when our good sheriff over here is investigating someone, before they've even brought charges, the, uh, Daily Journal believes that they should be able to get those search warrants. And they sued the county over that, and so we're going to employ, uh, a lawyer, law firm, uh, to represent us.
Totally, and it, we wouldn't vote nothing against him.
So, all right, Randy, you got the motion.
I'll say it.
I'm saying it.
Y'all vote choose on it.
All in favor? Motion, K.
We do need to do youth court. We can do it at the end. He may be.
It's on my-
Okay.
Uh, approval of resolution for ninety days to liquid, uh, that lanes from past U garbage leave?
This is from Berry Rivers, like, recommended we do this.
You'll have to know this garbage or not?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. My question.
My name is Sam. Second.
We, we're check, I'm checking because we may be able to put that on the consent agenda.
And it'll be with the garbage.
Yeah.
I mean, it'll be a tax relative to that.
With solid waste.
With solid waste, but that's what it's going to be. We're just having a-
It's a month, it's a month.
It's going to be a monthly thing, so we're going to put that in with the consent agenda next time, but we just need to get it started by presenting the resolution.
All right, okay.
Is that something you really follow up on? I mean, you're really going to collect the money or you don't see the legal process?
They have to come to our office to get their car tags. They have to be paid. There's a law for that. Because I'll, I'll send, right. What can you receive, we will send to the tax office and then they can collect on it. Okay. It's for your car tags.
Motion by Sam, second by Steve, all in favor? Motion, K.
You mean?
Yes.
Uh, county administrator, discuss approving, uh, Mercer Landscape Architect Agreement for the veterans park at the courthouse lawn.
I've talked to Bob Mercer, we've made a modification to his contract, and he's good with it, we're good with it. Chad's, uh, already initiated that too, so it's good, far good.
I make a motion to approve it. Second, motion by CJ. Second by Randy, all in favor? Motion, K. Second. Man, I could have.
Oh, no, it's, it's just, you put four friends in with the-
Oh, I got it.
Um, prove three manual checks to fuel man. Checks lost and mailed, stop payment issued.
And there's three manual.
Yes, but state, the stop payment has been issued by the baby, I tagged it in, but the check was lost to the male parent, so we're now going to reissue checks.
Motion to approve. Motion by Randy.
Second.
Second by Sam, all in favor? Motion, K.
About six months.
I weren't, I weren't ready to go out there, but there's some much of them.
Yeah, six.
Six.
Six five.
Six six, eh?
Oh.
Six five.
Six five.
My land lost, my man. Uh, we need the approval of settlement of pool funds from the pool of Max. I make a motion for that one. Second, motion by CJ, second by Steve, all in favor? Motion, K. Chancery clerk.
We need explanation on this one, too. Terry?
Terry, I think that's what we saw here, property of a incorporated Woodson and Hance, Mississippi, building that was pooled money, we put it in an account there.
It was going to be given out to the Toyota Service Department Fund, but the funds that we have, Uni County District and some other funds that we have.
Yeah.
Correct?
The schools get some, six hundred twenty-one thousand, and then, uh, debt service is going to be seven hundred ninety-seven thousand, six hundred sixty-two fifty. And then we got some other funds that are involved, uh, regular funds, three hundred sixty-seven thousand, because it has. Uh, that money goes from Tamara to pull every, we got our taxes in, and then the pool sells it back to the three counties, and the three counties pays the debt service and schools gets their portion and so forth. That's what that is.
And now? You heard the man. Chancery clerk, approval of payment to chancery clerk for home state application reimbursement.
I thought you were chucking me.
Money for reimbursement.
Sorry.
Motion by Sam.
Thanks, Sam.
I'll second that.
Thanks, CJ.
Second to CJ, all in favor? Motion, K. Uh, appointment of Mark and Clinton as youth court public defender, effective July first, and discuss approval of payment change.
That's what I jumped out of the turn on.
Yeah. So Mason is going to the VA's office, Anna Kate, so Mason was the head, you can call public defender because he was the senior, Anna Kate was second. So we're going to move Anna Kate into Mason's spot, and then Mark and Clinton, who's now public defender here, he's going to move to Anna Kate's spot for youth court public defender. So.
We'll approve that, and then we're going to approve the payment change because Anna Kate moving up to the first position will get his salary that he had, and then Mark will get Anna Kate's salary.
Yep. So financially, the numbers, thanks, I excuse me. That's right.
Make a motion to approve. Motion by Randy, second. Second by Steve, all in favor? Motion, K. So now we need, we need to get a motion on, on the payment change from-
If you want to do it together, you can. If everybody agrees to it, we can put those in together.
Let's put that together.
Okay. Motion, K. All right, and then she's got a, uh, deletion of an IBM model.
I got a motion on that.
Motion by CJ, second by Randy, all in favor? Motion, K.
Can we do it all in this one time?
Mm-hmm. I'm so excited. It looks so much better now. Thank you.
That's not here, we, yeah, we just signed that. We got one of the old. Now, you guys wait for it, keep that money.
Okay.
You bet when you see good next.
What are you saying? Yeah, I'm getting excited.
Make all specials, right?
Thank you.
I'll pick my phone up here in a second.
Circuit clerk is getting the approval of payment for circuit court expenses.
We got the motion.
Motion by Steve.
There.
Second by Randy, all in favor? Motion, K. Uh, emergency management agency is Kurt Clayton, I reckon. Approval of home lamb security grant agreement.
Have you got a copy of that?
I do, thank you.
For the P.
Yes.
Was it a brief animal grant? Yes, it was. And what it is, is the brief animal grant for the search program system, the emergency response training. Uh, they pay for the meals, they pay for the backpack that goes with it, we can do this class, the fourteenth and fifteenth of July.
But it's not, that's for like, this-
That's for citizens. It's not first responders, or particularly just citizens that want to learn how to protect themselves during natural disasters, that gives them a little bag that has some survival stuff in it and just gives them some ideas of what they need to do before we actually get there.
When is that?
July the fourteenth and fifteenth, on a Friday night and a Saturday.
Mr. Lamb might be interested.
Well, I'm going to get with them and, because we got several slots that's open. I've got twenty-five spots, and I think I've got thirteen or fourteen applicants already voting it. So I got to offer it to them first, so they want to come through and order the class, and then we're going to put up the rest of them, try to fill the class. And if this works out, we're going to turn right around and do it again. Because you got to do a minimum of twenty-five, so if it works, if it works out, this is our first time ever doing it, so if it works out, we're going to turn right around and re-operate again and do it again again.
All right, sounds good. I got a motion by Randy, second, second by Sam. All in favor? Motion, K. Justice Court, uh, approval travel for two justice court judges to convention in Biloxi July sixteenth through twentieth.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by CJ.
Second.
Second by Steve, all in favor? Motion, K. Uh, sheriff's department, we got approved Dallas Lumpkin to attend bomb explosion training in New Mexico, no one knows, June eighteenth through twentieth. Uh, the only thing we got to reimburse is, is meals, I reckon.
I guess correct.
Motion to approve. Motion by Randy.
Second.
Second by Steve. All in favor? Motion, K. Approval to give Ms. Teresa Hester her Glock forty-three X for a tire. An approval of the inventory deletion, let me get them both.
Make a motion.
Motion by Sam.
Second.
Second with CJ, all in favor? Motion, K. Discuss renewing, uh, contract with nurse practitioner Emily Jollin Camp and Dr. Shanes as medical staff for the Uni County District.
They did a good job, yeah.
Yes, sir.
They do a good, good job.
They do, yeah.
Yeah, we're proud. Motion. Motion by Stan. Second by Randy.
All in favor?
Motion, K. Uh, rail department, approval of payroll authorization for park naming by Ronald Frankie Peck. Yeah.
Peck.
Peck. Motion by Sam.
Second.
Second by CJ. All in favor? Motion, K.
I don't know.
Well, that's what the cat is sitting there.
Oh. Oh, you didn't know how to-
Uh-uh, I'm sorry.
Speaking of dabbles.
Can I make a second?
CJ.
All right.
Thanks.
Okay, we need to discuss, uh, B has received from many excavators, being tracked over. I didn't know you have to tell them that.
Okay. We can look at these, basically, we receive these bids and go through them. The first one is from Power Equipment. The power equipment is one twenty-five eight oh eight, one hundred twenty-five thousand dollars, I mean, one two hundred twenty-five thousand eight hundred eight dollars for one. And then we got a second one more.
No, it might sue, wouldn't it? Yes, powers come out soon, and I think there's one from Thompson.
Okay, this one, I'll hit it. Let me speak a mic right here. From Tom, where?
Thompson, the cat's called, I think.
I'm trying to see, is this, yeah, this was the higher one.
This is one hundred forty-four. You said that?
Here it is. One hundred forty-four thousand five hundred ten dollars and sixty-seven cents. One four four five one oh point six seven is from Thompson Cat. Then we have, this would be Thompson Machinery. What is that, was that supposed to go to this one, the Thompson Cat?
Okay, what is that?
She put-
More than one. Just give it to you.
Right, this is the mini excavator, this is the mini excavator. And this is, these were all together.
Yeah.
So they're supposed to, okay, it's supposed to be together, got it. All right.
Lot of, lot of the B was power, was power.
Correct, for one twenty-five eight oh eight. So do you want to get the lower B and so maybe you want all that?
Uh, we're going, I make a motion to accept Thompson or low B.
Is that power equipment?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. High equipment.
Okay.
I make a motion, motion by Randy.
Second, and it, and it won't need to quantify how many, but-
Was it for two or three?
Y'all let me know how many you want.
That's one or more. How many you, are y'all?
I don't, I don't.
We got two.
Three.
So first and second's got, got one apiece. Y'all, you guys don't have one. I make a motion by three.
Motion by Randy.
I made a sucker ball go, so we're accepting this bid for all three.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Who's the second on the?
Steve.
Motor, listen. I guess you can make it just one, can't you?
You just done it one.
I'm going to do one, I'm just going to say we're purchasing that, uh, we prepare with power equipment, was, or, I'm going to say it's the lowest, we're purchasing through, that's what I'm saying, yes, is that okay?
Okay. Okay, discuss a bid received on Skidsteak. Approve on the Skidsteak.
Got Stripling, this, all the specs were gone through, Stripling meets the specs, Thompson Cat did not meet the specs, and Scrugg Farms had, so it'd be those two. Okay, so Stripling, theirs is ninety-nine thousand four seventy-nine point oh five, nine nine four seven nine point oh five for one. And then Scruggs presented a bid, theirs is one oh eight eight forty-nine, one oh eight eight forty-nine. And as I said, we had the other one from Thompson Cat, and they did not meet the specifications, so we had to put that to the side. So the lower B would be from Stripling for ninety-nine four seventy-nine oh five, and then decide how many to do according to it.
Make a motion to the lower B.
And two.
Huh?
And two.
And two.
Motion by Sam. Second, second by Randy, all in favor? Second by Randy, all in favor? Motion, Ken.
Mr. Christmas.
Yeah, this is going live.
All right, tax office, approval of surrender tag list.
I got motion on that.
Motion by CJ.
Second one, I'm gonna take that one. Yeah, I'm taking that one.
Second. All in favor? Motion, Ken. Uh, approval of payment to Christie Settlement for mapping audit in Town Creek Grindin Special Assessment. Motion. Motion by Randy.
Thank you.
Second, second by CJ.
All in favor? Motion, Ken. Is there something we were supposed to ask?
Nothing.
We took care of the pack.
Two quote, five drugs somewhere. Damn it, save for you. About two weeks ago. On the phone, I did, I'm not.
I'll have to say, I don't know.
Don't go, no.
Okay, jam, jam. All right, CJ, you ready?
We gotta look at these bids on this truck, on this grant.
Oh, it's put in on it. What is it?
It's not even on here with the emergency.
Okay, one bid received from Cannon Motors for twenty twenty-three Ram fifty-five hundred crew cab. For seventy-nine thousand nine hundred ninety-five. Seven nine 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 five.
How much?
Seven nine 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 five. Seventy-nine thousand nine.
Eight, brother, that's a lot.
Eight, yes.
Close.
Fifty-five hundred chassis, yeah, four-wheel drive.
And Grant paying for this.
Fine, fine.
You don't have to see it.
Yes, sir.
Like you can.
You're paying for it. And then the other one is from Landers. Same thing, eighty-three thousand four five nine, eighty-three thousand four hundred fifty-nine dollars.
I'm gonna make a check on low bid. And that would be Landers.
Landers out of South Haven. I thought you said Landers, when you said Landers, that's your name, Cannon, so sorry.
Is that Cannon at all, Landers at all?
Cannon had a low bid.
I'll second.
Motion by Randy, second by CJ.
Prove everything.
All in favor? Got a motion to recess to monitor June that thing. Second by Sam. Second by Randy. All in favor? Motion, Ken.